Hello, everybody. We will call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Fargo Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 2nd. The hour's 3:00. And we have a very short agenda. We'll start out before we even approve the order of agenda. Just would like to welcome our newest Commissioner, Jennifer Holt. So we'll easy into these as this is a two-item deal. So first item, to approve the order of agenda. As you can see, Items 1A and B have been continued to November 6th. 2A, B, and C continued to November 6th. Item 3 continued to November 6th. Item 4 will be heard. Item 5 is continued to November 6th. The 6 we will hear, and we have one other item to discuss. I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved, and a second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Next is to approve the minutes from our meeting on September 4th. They were attached to your packet. Commissioners, any questions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay. Our next brown bag is scheduled for Wednesday, October 17th. We will have more information coming out to the Commissioners in regards to that. Onto our public hearing items. So we'll open this up for public hearing. First item is number 3. Nope, just kidding. Number 4, Sensile Edition. And Megan is out, so we'll hear from Donald today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donald Kress of the Department of Planning and Development. As the Chair said, subbing for Megan Elshough, the case planner who prepared this report. She was not able to be here today. So I'm filling in. So this is the Sensile Edition, 37th Avenue South and 45th Street. This property is currently undeveloped. It is zoned LC Limited Commercial. Single-family zoning here to the west. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow household living in the limited commercial zone. Your Commissioners heard a number of these before. Their proposal is to build a 45-unit apartment building that is focused on seniors, which is now 55 and older. So I qualify now, surprisingly. But a CP for household living limited commercial zone. North of this immediately, to the north, you may remember, is the memory care facility there, is the Mapleview facility. And that's, again, been there for some time. But again, the proposal here is for apartments. It's not a nursing home or a group living situation. They'll be even individual apartments. Here's the site plan of the building. The garage is they will take access from 37th Avenue Southwest. There won't be access off 45th. There is an adjacent residential area here. There is noted on this landscape plan, a landscape buffer that would be required as part of our residential protection standards. This is not something that you're voting on right now, but it's a requirement that they'll go through when they do the site plan. Additionally, staff has proposed two conditions here. Normally, we have, I'm going to go to the recommendation here because that lists the conditions. Normally, when we do these conditional use permits for residential in the commercial zones, we use the MR3 density of 24 units per acre. However, in Megan's conversation with the applicants, their project isn't going to be that big. So we've proposed that we use the MR1 zoning district, which is 16 dwelling units per acre, which will provide them the density they need. But, you know, otherwise, it would be over 72 dwelling units per acre that they could put there. So again, just to keep it a focused project there, we'd have the, just the minimum density that they would need. And again, our standard condition of a requirement of 35 percent, the lot shall remain open space, is a requirement of all the MR zones, and we just carry that through to our conditional use permits. So the two applicants, the applicants representatives here, from the Evangelical Lutheran Good Samaritan Society, Shelley Lynn and Shannon Clark are here, as well as, I believe, Mr. Carlson from JLG Architects, who is the architect. And that concludes staff's presentation. The recommendation is stated on the screen and on your packet. And that concludes our presentation, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Commissioners, any questions for Donald?
Thanks, Donald. I just have a couple of questions. There's no mixed use as part of this. It's just all residential.
As far as I know, sir, yes. We'll have to ask the applicant about that.
I guess, one, it seems like a great project. I just maybe question the location of it as far as planning it. I'm curious what went into the recommendation when it's on 45th Street, which is sort of a major corridor. If I think further down by, you know, Shields and the Chipotle area, there's an apartment building right across the street from there. And it seems like it's really out of place on a major corridor where you're surrounded by commercial activity. And all of a sudden, you have a random apartment building aligning a major corridor like that. And so...
Well, Commissioner, I'll answer part of that.
Yeah.
Perhaps Mr. Williams would have some additional information there. As you see here, sir, that we do have similar uses. This is the memory care facility in the church here, and so not really a commercial area here. One of the reasons we did recommend the conditional use permit rather than a change of zone is so that opportunity would exist to do both. Or if, you know, something happened with this project, we would still have that commercial zoning on there, so we wouldn't lose the commercial zoning. And the Evangelical Good Samaritan Society has owned this property for some time. Is that correct? Right. Okay. So that would be part of it. I don't know, Mr. Williams, have any more comment on that?
Yeah, I would say this area has kind of developed like a campus. And you have full-blown nursing, assisted living, senior housing, all those different types of uses within these facilities. So it kind of complements what's going on there. And that was the reason the direction was taken.
And so, and maybe you could expound on why we don't change the zoning instead of conditional use? We feel like this is where it's going?
In this situation, because of the campus feel of the senior-type amenities provided, with the LC zoning, it gives an opportunity to be able to maybe insert a use that might be needed in the future based on the needs from the residents. For instance, like if somebody wanted to put a pharmacy in there, or some sort of facility where they would get direct benefit out of, but yet it's more a commercial nature.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, at this time, we'll invite the applicant up. If you have anything to present.
Shannon Clark from the Evangelical Lutheran Good Samaritan Society. I don't really have any additional items to present. I'm just open for any additional questions if you have them.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And we'll open it up for a public comment. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Come on up to the podium and give us your name.
Hello, my name is Adam Burris, and I live in the Sensile Edition behind here. And I do have a couple of questions for the applicants. In particular, I'm wondering why we are going to a two-story building in this area in that your facility literally across 37th Street is single-story? And what backs up to you here, three of those six houses are ranch-style houses, and the height of that is going to be noticeably different. I understand you want to maximize what you can put on that lot, but I'd like to have some sort of explanation as to why you chose that, because it really doesn't fit what else is already there.
So if I'll just have you give your comments, and then I'll have them speak to it afterwards. So if you had any other questions or anything...
Initially, the planning also had that this was going to be a 51-unit establishment, and now it's down to 45. And they had also told us that they were going to be 45 and under, or 45 and over in that facility. I'm only saying, when we went over and looked at the plans, that's what we were told. So I'm commenting on that. And specifically, there were also, at the time that the memory care facility was built, there are landscaping and drainage issues that were addressed after the fact, before that condition, before they got their permit, that I'm also concerned about living in that area. And I'd like to make sure that those were addressed properly and that they weren't addressed with that. They were basically, hey, this building's already going to happen. We're going to figure out how to fix it, as opposed to fixing it before it was permitted and allowed to be there.
The reason that we chose 45 units is because of, we are applying for a competitive award situation with North Dakota Housing Finance Authority. And we really can't apply for any more than about 45. That's usually about the maximum that they award. And the reason that we have to do 45 and we can't do less, which would be, if we had a one-story building, it would be less units, is because we actually have to have a certain number of units in order to be financially feasible. If we don't have enough units, then we really can't afford, you know, to staff the building, and it just doesn't make financial sense. So 45 units is about the limit that we can do on there. So we've actually positioned the building so that it runs along the commercial space in the north, and then, I think this is the right direction, but, and then along the east, so that it is not next to the residential buildings, and it only goes to two stories. Our normal plan is a three-story building, so we are only going up two stories. And then the garages there are obviously one-story. So we don't feel that that will, you know, impact the direct sightline of the residents, the residents that run along that line. And then there's also going to be landscaping, that is natural landscaping, like trees and shrubbery. So that's really all that's going to be seen along there. And then, I don't really have any information as to why you were not having the correct information, but when we choose buildings as far as elderly, or sorry, seniors, it's always 62-plus or 55-plus, and it's usually just dependent on a variety of factors. And it just makes more sense to do 55-plus in this instance. 45 is usually never a, or 50 is never a deciding factor. And the last question, I think I would have to, about the drainage issue.
Can we talk about that?
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other members of the audience wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Can I ask a follow-up question with that?
Sure.
Well, only in that there's 45...
Sorry, you need to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
There are 45 units going in here.
Yep.
But the total number of houses in that section right now, there are 79 houses. We're adding, you know, a substantial number to that. I mean, you're taking a third of what's already there and adding those people to that driveway and that drive. I mean, I don't know that it's going to make any difference, but it will make a, it will be a definite traffic and congestion issue there.
Thank you. Donald, come on up.
Ma'am, if I just would respond to the gentleman's comment regarding the drainage issues. What we are reviewing and approving here today is a land use permit. It talks about allowing a land use. When this goes to the building plan stage, building plans, as Commissioners may know, are reviewed by planning, building, engineering, fire inspections for all these drainage and other considerations, as the testifier stated there. So that is the point at which this gets reviewed, because we don't ideally let the building go forward there without having these issues resolved. So that is not something that is addressed in the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or discussion?
Donald, just to address the height issue, because I think light commercial can go to what height?
I don't have that in front of me, sir.
55 feet.
Okay.
So we could have a, we could have a 55-foot-high structure there without even having to permit it. I mean, it would go through permitting.
In that location, yes. You start getting into residential protection standards, and based on how far you get from the residential property line, it steps up. But based on the distance of this building, it could be 55 feet.
We're talking a two-story building, and we could have a 55-foot-tall building?
Correct.
Okay. So height isn't really an issue.
Commissioners, any other questions or discussion? Or I would entertain a motion? Okay. Commissioner McGelkey.
Madam Chairman, I'll offer the motion as included in our staff report.
Okay, is there a second? There's a second. Christian Morgan. Any discussion on the motion? We'll do a roll-call vote, please.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
McGelkey?
Aye.
Fassa?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Now onto item number 6. Barrett will walk us through this one. Barrett and Aaron, possibly?
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is kind of a joint effort on staff for item number 6. For item number 6, the Planning and Development Department has submitted an application for various LDC tax amendments of Sections 2-02 through 20-07 and Section 20-09. We saw this as an opportunity because of the low number of applications that we received this month, that we would take some LDC tax edits off of our list that we maintain for the purposes of correcting grammar errors in the Land Development Code tax document, and then to clarify language that more effectively conveys how the ordinance is implemented in practice. So I won't go through all of them, but there were quite a few. If the Commission has any questions on any of these, we'd be more than happy to discuss it in detail and provide the information. And then, when staff evaluated the application, we found that the land development requirements have been met, and therefore, we recommend the approval of the proposed tax edits as outlined in this PowerPoint.
Barrett, could I actually have you address the lay-down items?
Oh, sure. So just during the past couple hours, we kind of reviewed some of the things that we had provided in the report, and we noticed that there are some errors or revisions that we wanted to add. So for example, in this graphic illustration of minor subdivisions, we wanted to retain the word "hearing," whereas it was accidentally removed in the staff report. The second item that we wanted to address was the parking and loading language. We wanted to cross out the word "required" to rectify an error and an issue that it created in the past.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Barrett? We will open it up for public hearing. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions or discussion, or ready to act?
I'll make the motion as outlined in the packet.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? We'll do a roll-call vote on this, too, please.
McGelkey?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Fassa?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. The motion is carried. That concludes the public hearing. We'll go down to the other item, and Jim Gilmore will walk us through the review of renewal plans for the Roosevelt neighborhood.
Thank you. One of the responsibilities or roles of the Planning Commission is to take a look at these renewal plans, to make a recommendation to City Commission whether or not they're consistent with the overall plans of the community. I think these are, and I'll get into that, but these renewal areas are in the University Mixed Use zoning district west of T Lot. The property is all zone, university mixed use. And so what's been happening over the, since it was zoned, that is Roar's Development and some others have been acquiring older structures, and they plan to remove those and, you know, build new housing sometime in the future. The last time, I think, we had some renewal plans before you in this area was in 2016. There was a Junction 9 apartment building that went in. And in that case, the, we knew specifically what the new design was going to be. They were taking down some older homes. And so in this case, what we've been looking for is a way to encourage a developer to remove these dilapidated homes now, even though they don't know exactly what the, what the new buildings will look like, or when exactly those will be built. Some of these blocks may not be developed for two to six years from now. Yet there are structures that should be removed now. Couple of them probably meet the definition of a dangerous building. Others are just, you know, they're deteriorated, and they may or may not meet that standard. Kind of came to our attention, especially by the fire department's attention, there was a garage that burned this past year, and sort of has this burned-out hull right now. And, you know, the city has a policy of working with developers in this area on these public-private partnerships to provide some assistance to remove the homes. At this point, since we don't know what's going to go there, or if there should be a tax increment financing district, what we're really doing is sort of the first phase of a process where we adopt a renewal plan. This part of the plan says these homes should be removed. The plan, then, if they're going to get any sort of tax exemptions, would be amended sometime in the future. It would outline what exactly they would, how exactly they would benefit, and what the new project would be. The types of benefits that the city can provide with tax increment financing, should it do so in the future, would be assist with some of the cost of land acquisition, as well as pay for demolition and public facilities. Really can't go beyond that. We would not be paying for the construction of the new lots. So again, the role of Planning Commission is to decide whether or not this is consistent with the overall plans of the city and essentially the zoning. The City Commission asked us to prepare these plans and to bring them back to them for their consideration. And we actually looked at four areas, which, one of which was going to be the Newman Block. But since that zoning then came in beforehand, we did not begin work on that, or we did not complete work on that renewal plan until you make a decision on the zoning. So I walked through each of these renewal plans. We got some pictures, and also have some video to show you what we're trying to remove. This first block, it's Block 19 of these, basically the addition. I can see it's all of the area that would be in the renewal plan are outlined by, in yellow. It's all, all those properties are zone, university mixed use. The age of the properties vary from, I think the oldest is in 1901, where the newest is in about 1940. They're all old homes, varying size from one unit to four units. This shows the land ownership. The ones that have the sort of that red cross hatching are owner-occupied housing units in the area. On this particular block, there are two owner-occupied homes. And then within this renewal area, there are six houses that are proposed for removal. This is probably one of the more deteriorated homes on the block, 1037 17th Street North. These are some photos we took from a drone. We, this house, there were two pine trees in the front, and I asked the owners, Roar's, to remove those so we could, because they were clearly growing over the sidewalk. When they did, we found the house was in really poor condition. I know the, sort of really stands out now is deteriorated. I see these pictures. This is another one on the block. These two would not be demolished right away. This one would go down. This one would go down. This one's still occupied, as is this one. And then these next three are quite deteriorated. You can see that burned-out garage that we'd like to get removed, as well as this home. Pretty poor condition. Aaron, do you want to show, there's a video we have just to kind of give you a perspective of what this block looks like? It's stalling. There are large files, so they probably move kind of slow. Those first two homes are still occupied. This particular house right there that you see in the corner is kitty-corner from the five-story T Lot apartment building. So this is, you know, very close to the campus, and it seems like the suitable land use in the long term is for more higher-density housing, either to serve students or people that might work or teach at the university. See, in the kind of upper-right-hand corner, there's that house I showed you before that was quite deteriorated, that kind of sits on two lots. Where we flew this, it was, the lots have a lot of trees, almost a little bit, as well as the street trees, you can't really see past those. People see in the upper-right corner that, that T Lot apartment building, so you can get in at very close proximity to the campus. Do you have any particular questions on this block while this continues?
So this is, are you recommending that, what percentage of these would be demolished or need to be demolished? All of them?
I think they would, the plan would be to remove all of them at the time that development is ready to occur, but the six of the homes that are vacant and substandard be removed as soon as possible. Can you kind of see T Lot, the T Lot's in the upper-left-hand corner now?
Yep. Commissioner McGelkey?
So that, that garage that burnt down, how long ago did that burn down or catch on fire?
This past summer, I believe, you called the chief.
Early May, spring. Okay. Is there any reason it's still up? I mean, it looks like it's, I mean, I see a orange fence around it, but doesn't that have a safety hazard? I mean, if some kid goes in there?
I believe the plan was to take it down at the same time as the house, provided this renewal plan was adopted. I have the same concern for these seven, or excuse me, six vacant homes that, when we were out there, we could see where people had broken into them, and were concerned about other fires, and so, and to kind of consult with the chief. I think you'd prefer to see these homes go down if they're not going to be occupied.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, definitely, especially with the winter coming. These can be places where people hide out and start fires for warmth and cause more problems. We have contacted Roar's in the past about making sure the electricity and the gas is off. But this one, the one that had the fire in it, was turned over to buildings, and a letter should have gone out that said, hey, you need to tear this down. Usually, that's within 30 days. They're supposed to take care of that. Not exactly sure why that didn't happen.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Go through the, let me get back to the presentation. I'll go through the next two. This is the block immediately north of that. Again, this is zone, university mixed use. There's one house on here that's pretty deteriorated, built in 1920. There's one lot that's already vacant, was, must have had a house torn down. I'm not sure when, when that happened. But there are deteriorated conditions on all of these properties, probably not as severely as that last block. There's one owner-occupied home on the block, the one in the red hatch is the one... There's one owner occupied home on the block, the one in the red hatch is the one that would be removed. And some of these apartment buildings are not, you know, terribly old, but they do show signs of deterioration. And given the proximity to the, the T lots, they're in interest in higher density housing here. This particular house is the one that should be demolished. This probably does meet the definition of a dangerous building. You can see there's a hole in the roof. And many of these homes haven't been lived in for quite some time. Roars has acquired, I believe Larry could address the most, but Roars has acquired a lot of these properties in the last 12 to 18 months. They have not been the long-term owners of these. They've been acquiring these with plans to remove them. So they weren't the ones that owned them at the time. They became severely deteriorated. This is one of the other ones. This one's still occupied. This apartment building's not that old and so probably has some deteriorating conditions, but not, not a lot. And then this home, again, here's a vacant lot. This is what we'd like all those lots to look like is cleared and mowed and with grass until such time as redevelopment. And so it's one of the things we, we talked about in the plan. One of the feedbacks we got from some of the neighborhoods is that, you know, if we do take these down, we want to have the lots be well maintained so that they, as they look decent in the neighborhood until such time that they're able to be redeveloped. So any questions on that block?
Jim, go back to that apartment building that you see, that one. Why would that be, okay, what's, what's wrong with that building?
Yeah, I, I've not been in that one. That doesn't show any serious conditions of blight on the outside, but it is in the area. When you're looking at renewing an area, you don't have to have every single building be blighted, but just at least some, so you can actually remove buildings that aren't in that greatest shape. You know, the city mayor may not participate in, you know, costs of removing a building that, that looks okay. And so the amount of assistance on this block would likely be limited to the ones that are deteriorated.
For the record, that was, that was brand new when I was across the street in college. I don't want to stand still too long.
Not helping the case, John.
Harold Thompson, we did, we did meet with the, some representative of Roars, excuse me, from the Roosevelt neighborhood. And Harold Thompson told me he lived in there when he was at college. So in better shape then. But I think the feedback from the neighborhood really was that they knew this area would be appropriate for redevelopment and they, there didn't seem to be major concerns. As far as the feedback I got, we did notify everyone in the area. I got four phone calls on it. Two were from other apartment owners that were concerned that they're not, that we weren't going to give assistance. I wasn't going to adversely affect them because there's higher vacancy rates now. And so we noted that in the plan, the amount of assistance, you know, may develop, or would likely depend on the rental vacancy rate at such time that there is a project. The other two are people who owned homes in the area. One who really wanted to see that White House torn down because she was having to look at it right across the street. And another expressed concern over the condition of the homes in the neighborhood. Finally, the last plan, this is on 18th Street. There are seven houses here. Again, most of them are fairly old, two of them in very poor condition. There are two owner occupied homes on the southern edge of the block. This particular block, we've actually, this was developed with the help of a TIF district. And both of these projects were also provided some incentives to remove deteriorated homes and develop that. This is a block immediately to the west, the last one you looked at. This is one of the ones that would be removed. You can see both the front and the back picture of it and some photos from the, from the drone. And this one would also be removed. That's all we have. So the, the recommendation I'd like to get from you is to, just a motion to find that these plans are consistent with our overall go 2030 plans, you know, the neighborhood plans and other plans of the city. Again, the, the first part of this plan is to remove these homes. The ones, certainly the ones that are deteriorated now and then any others that might become deteriorated in the future until, you know, something comes rundown before the plan's implemented. Some of these homes are, you know, quite old. And if all of a sudden the roof goes bad and the furnace goes out, they may choose to simply shut it down as a rental rather than putting a major investment into it. Particularly these, these homes are, you know, 70, 80 years old. Larry Nagard is here from Roars Development. Larry, I don't know if you want to make any comments or, certainly Larry's available to answer any questions. Do you have any questions to me for?
Commissioners, questions?
Thanks, Jim. Members of the planning commission. You won't find any arguments from us about tearing some of these buildings down. We've been searching for a vehicle to do this for probably going on two years now. So I think this is a good solution that the, the planning commission or the planning staff came up with. It's going to allow us to do what we think is right for some of these homes, and that's get rid of them because they're a nuisance and they're very difficult to maintain even in this condition because there's always nefarious stuff happening there. So looking forward to the opportunity to tear them down and then at the same time not diminish the blight qualification that might be necessary with redevelopment in the future. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. When you originally began working on your plan for the redevelopment into the apartment buildings, did you include in your financial planning the demolition of these buildings?
Well, everything is on a case-by-case basis. So we would have to analyze that at the time that we would actually initiate each project. But when we look at each one of these blocks, we, we would have assumed that there'd be some help in the demolition and removal of the existing structures.
Would you go ahead with the projects if you didn't get the help?
Well, as you can see, we've acquired a lot of these already. So to say that we wouldn't would mean we leave them right where they're at. And we couldn't do that. But certainly that would change our outlook on whether or not the project was feasible.
Just a little aside, it seems like there's been a lot of construction of apartment buildings near and around NDSU. And so thinking about, you know, the attractive quality of the, the buildings, the apartment buildings, would they be totally dependent upon students? Because I can't imagine why someone else would want to live in that particular area of the city if it wasn't a student or someone related to NDSU.
You know, our experience is that they're not exclusively students, no matter what we build in that area. And we have three or four different projects. But I can tell you that it's somewhere between 85 and 90% of the population are students. So I would expect that's an attractive area for students. But you'll always get some non-students that, for whatever reason, find it a nice place as well.
So do you think that this continued construction of apartment buildings designed for students primarily is going to kind of come to an end at some point? Or do you see it as just going on further on and on? Because, you know, the, NDSU has concerns itself about the number of students that they have and whether higher education is going to continue to grow in the way that it has in the past. You know, possibly according to the governor, that there are other potential ways of people seeking education other than, you know, going to a university campus. Not that I'm terribly in favor of that, but I'm just wondering if you're taking into account that, that that may be something that would develop in the future.
I, I think, you know, that's a very good point. And it's something we're obviously considering. You're familiar with the Newman Center project that we're proposing not too far from this. There will be a saturation point. I don't know where, where that's at. One of the things that, that we continue to see is a very large percentage of the students that do live off campus right now live south of Main Avenue. So there's still a lot of commuting back and forth, which we feel that if you provide an affordable, nice alternative near the campus, the students will choose that over driving in South Fargo. So we do still think there's some demand that exists in the market that isn't being met. But where that ends, I guess we don't know for sure. This is three projects for us here. And the beauty of being able to do it the way we're proposing with these renewal districts is we can get rid of the blight as it occurs and we can just kind of wait and see. And if we have to change to a, maybe a non-student model down the road or something, maybe it's different. Maybe it becomes townhomes or something like that. Maybe that becomes what the demand is. We're going to be able to switch gears then and do that.
So at this point, are you planning three buildings or are there more?
Well, I think, I don't know about the number of buildings, but there would have been three projects, one in each one of these renewal districts.
Thank you. We, yep, perfect. Any other, no. Sorry. Okay, I got it out of the corner of my eye there. Any other questions?
I have a general comment.
Yep, please.
You know, so I live in North Fargo, near the Newman Center project. And so I'm on a lot of groups and message boards and things. And one of the topics that was continued tonight was the Newman Center. And so I know there was an awful lot of posts sort of telling all the residents they didn't need to come tonight because that wasn't on here. But I, I have to think that a lot of them would be interested, if not pleased, by some of these developments as well. And so I don't know if we're looking for action tonight, but I'd sure like to have this presentation when the room is full of, of neighborhood residents. And so I feel like they pair well together. And so because we continued one and told everybody they, they didn't have to come tonight, passing something else that related to that neighborhood seems like we're doing one thing and saying another a little bit. And so I worry about the pushback we'd get on that. I don't know if there's a time crunch on this, Jim, but.
Yeah, for, the longer we wait, the less likely we'll get things down this fall. We did meet last Friday with three of the leaders of the Roosevelt neighborhood. And they're aware this is on the agenda tonight. We sent email or mailed letters to everyone on these blocks and the adjacent blocks. And I got four phone calls. And so they're aware of this, you know, hearing. So I think, you know, the people that were the leaders of the neighborhood understood that this complied with the zoning. And so they, you know, if we delay it, it means we're probably going to get less. I don't know if we'll get any houses done this fall because it still has to go back to city commission. So that's the time crunch, if you will.
Question for Jim. I'm not quite in line with the help, help for this, with Roars as far as the demolition because the demolition of these really doesn't cost much. I've done enough of it that I know what some of those houses, what they're going to spend. My question is, if you tear down a house in any other neighborhood, is the city going to assist somebody to put a new house up in that? So they're going to assist them in the demolition of that house?
As you know, there's a two-year exemption for new housing. And so in some ways, they would help in that manner. The, any assistance Roars would get, maybe just, you know, this is kind of a little bit off topic, but when the city decides to give assistance to developer, we require them to provide a detailed financials on the project. And they need to demonstrate, you know, well, if, you know, if they can get a 12% return on their investment without us helping them, we're not going to help them. If, if it's needed in order to get the rate of return up high enough to actually attract investors to do the project, that's when the city is going to do it. Again, that's done more through our tax increment, or tax exempt review committee, who scrutinizes whether or not they financially need the project. Here, the role of planning commission is, you know, does this project conform with the overall land use plan of the neighborhood? But I certainly want you to be aware of that we do scrutinize any financial assistance, determine whether or not they're going to need it or not. Because if they're going to do it anyway, then the city wouldn't provide it. However, in most of these cases, the performance come back and they do need some level of assistance. And that can vary from just the demolition to helping with land acquisition costs.
Commissioners, any other discussion? So I guess to be clear, is there a suggested motion? Is this a voice vote? Is it, need a little clarification on that being it's in the other item?
Again, in my, if I remember, I guess I'm requesting that the planning commission make a recommendation to the city commission that these renewal plans are consistent with the go 2030 comprehensive plan of the city of Fargo. So that's the recommended motion. The planning commission can either, you know, make that motion or not make that motion.
I, for one, I'd like to continue it to next month. So I'm not comfortable approving it tonight if, if the neighborhood felt like they didn't need to be here.
Okay, so you have a motion to continue?
Yeah, I mean, if that's one of the options, I'll move to continue it to the November.
Okay, is there a second on this motion? Seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion?
I have a problem.
Okay.
And the main problem is if we have houses here that are, that are a danger to the public and we can, I mean, I understand John's question about assisting and things. But I think like that, that burnt out garage really bothers me because some kid goes in there and the thing falls on top of them. You know, we're waiting for a month and then something like that happens. We've got all that, all of us to wait. So I guess from my perspective, I'm going to vote against.
Okay.
Well, just, maybe some clarification on that. Right now, that burnt out garage, what the chief said is the property owner should have already been sent something telling them to do that. So that is not on us. The property owner is responsible for keeping their building safe. That's, that's, that's not on us. And maybe, I don't know, Bruce Charleston walked in. Maybe we need a process update on these homes that are dangers right now. Is that on us to act to tear them out or is that an inspections department's?
Yeah, I know inspections is watching this because they were out there the day I was there. And I explained to them we were working on this renewal plan. So I think they felt because this renewal plan was in process that they did, weren't, you know, starting to take that dangerous building act since we were working with a developer to try to take those down.
Nicole?
Maybe just to add to the discussion, Jim, maybe if you want to repeat, maybe the purpose of the renewal plan?
Yeah, the, the purpose of the renewal plan is to encourage redevelopment of these blocks. And so what we're doing is sort of the first phase of any redevelopment is to, or this plan's saying we need to clear these dilapidated projects out. The plan would then later be amended to describe and talk about what type of development, you know, should happen. At least that's what we anticipate to happen. If it's not amended and the developer doesn't need any assistance, they can go ahead and, and do this without the, you know, the zoning. I, I guess as far as the city commission action, you know, when we look at the century code, the planning commission has 30 days to respond whether or not the renewal plans are consistent. I would think the city commission would wait if you want to take another month, but I can't guarantee they won't be in a hurry and want to just move ahead with this.
Nicole?
Maybe just to add real quick, also maybe the purpose of the renewal plan in relationship to the, a TIF request. So there's not a TIF application, is that correct?
No, there's, there's no TIF with this now. It says there might be. And so what this is doing is, you know, if they were just going to tear it down and then ask for a TIF later, we would say, well, I don't see any blight there. It's not there. What this does is document the blight, document the costs, which they may or may not get assistance with in the future.
Are all these properties that you showed us today, are they owned by Roars?
Yes.
Okay, so Roars is the one that owns the garage that's got the fire in it?
Yeah, and, and I think, I know.
And they didn't take, and they didn't take it down?
They have not taken it down yet.
Okay.
So we're, we're voting.
Larry, were you waiting to take it down with the house? Maybe you want to address that.
Yeah. We're pushing for this. So I mean, we, we want to get started on it. But Jim makes the point that if we go tear those down and make them, you saw the one lot that looked nice and mowed. That was one house that we took down about three years ago. And we would take them all down now if we could get this urban renewal plan in place. The point is, we tear them down, we don't have.
The point is, we tear them down, we don't have the ability to even capture the cost should we ever be awarded a tax increment financing district. That, that's just gone and so that's something we don't want to do.
But that's your problem.
And we're not...
That's not, I'm still really torn at, whatever, oh, shut up.
And keep in mind what we're voting, we're not voting on a TIF, we're not voting, we're not, we're not voting on any of that, we're not voting on plans, we're...
Oh, yeah, but we're voting to give them assistance if this goes through...
No.
For the demolition.
No, we still take that, we take the risk that there may not be any available at all.
So, how does that step fit into this, Jim?
Well, I mean, when we...
Where does it go from here?
What this plan does is document that this was blighted and so if they come in and ask for a TIF in the future, it could be eligible. City commission could say still, no, we don't, you know, we don't think you need any assistance, we don't like your plan. But if the city commission does like the plan and these costs are documented and they want to provide incentive in order to make a project feasible, they would be able to do that in the future.
So, there isn't assistance with this right now for the demolition?
No, none. There's no guarantee at all. They're taking a risk to take this many homes down. There's, I'm not a building inspector, but there's probably two that are dangerous buildings that if we went to court, we could get down, you know, today and we could probably push Roar's to do it. The others, I don't think they meet the definition of a dangerous building, they're certainly deteriorated, they're vacant, they're probably a bit of a nuisance, but I don't know if they meet that standard of a dangerous building. It's not clear yet. But so, we're trying to get them to take them down before they become dangerous, before they fall on somebody.
Nicole?
Well, Commissioner Cuckelman, does that answer your question or?
Somewhat.
So, I think just to break it down really simply, it's, and I don't want, if you want to continue, you want to continue it, but just to break it down really simply, you're being asked today, do we consider these properties blighted? Is this area blighted? And if so, do you believe it's ready for redevelopment? That's really all you're being asked to do and do you believe redevelopment is appropriate in this area? Whether it's redevelopment in single family, whether it's redevelopment in multi-family, whether it's redevelopment. Later, you'll see redevelopment proposals come before you at a alternate time. Keep in mind, it's zone university mixed use. You've already voted on that, you've already allowed for university mixed use development to happen here by right. And so, really in front of you would be if you wanted to rezone it or replat it and that's when it would come back in front of you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We do have a motion on the table. Can you remind me, do we do a roll call vote on this? On Rocky's motion and we have a second.
Yeah, and if you...
On the continuation. We do a roll call?
Yeah, procedural matters, you don't require a roll call, but do a roll call.
Okay.
Why not?
I'd love to do a roll call, though, unless there's...
I'll just clarify because just after Nicole, my motion's not for or against this renewal plan at all. I just think over the last year, rightly or wrongly so, we've been attacked as a body for sort of openness to the public and I feel like there's enough confusion out there where we told this neighborhood to stay home today because their main item wasn't on here and I know we've met with them and we've probably done our due diligence, but not with everybody, not with the posts I've seen. And so, I'm just really concerned that we go forward with something in their neighborhood after we told them not to come tonight. And so, it's just my, that's, I thought it'd be fair to continue.
And if I can't, sorry, I know you're in the middle of discussion, so staff's really out of turn here, acknowledge that. So, two things. One, we did also email everybody as part of this continuation and said, by the way, don't forget this is on the agenda. Second, again, we're, you're voting on whether or not these are blighted and to be demoed. Third, the, just to clarify the difference between this action and the dangerous building action that building official takes, staff, you know, this could sound a little bit like advocacy, but staff believes this is an easier way than I would imagine. The building official is going after these properties one by one, property owner by property owner, thirty day notice by thirty day notice per property. And so, that is quite a bit of staff administration time.
Yep.
I've got another...
Sorry, one second.
Sorry.
I guess my question would be, are, just to clarify, are we voting that this entire renewal district neighborhood is blighted or just these vacant homes that are a danger?
We're seeing that there's blight within the area outlined in yellow, the properties that are owned by Roar's. Some of those are, you know, really dilapidated, there's nine of them that are dilapidated, others are deteriorated. You know, the one building, you know, didn't look that bad at all, so, but certainly within these areas that there is blight.
I have a question. So, included in this plan, are there other buildings other than those owned by Roar's that are under consideration?
No. If Roar's was going to acquire additional property, they wanted to include them, we'd have to go back and amend the plan.
But in saying that there are blighted properties and it's, it's important to demolish them, the question would be, why is it only Roar's then if there, if the whole area is, has blighted properties?
What we really focused on was the properties that Roar's own. We didn't go do a comprehensive review of non-owned, non-Roir's properties. You know, driving around the area, there's certainly other houses with deterioration. But again, this plan focused on just those properties that were owned by Roar's Development or one of their LLCs.
So, is the, is the plan expected to expand in that area to what is considered other blighted properties?
I think within those, there's two blocks where they, you know, they might acquire additional properties. The one block, there's seven in a row and I don't think there's any opportunity to expand that. There could be other renewal plans within this, you know, neighborhood. Look at the ownership, I see another group of about, you know, six or seven properties owned by one developer, you know, they, I imagine they might want to redevelop at that at some point. In the past, you've had on your agenda requests from Jay Alsop to do, you know, redevelopment along that. He's inquired of the TIF district. So, certainly there could be more districts created, but, you know, we're not addressing that tonight.
Okay. Well, I was just concerned, you know, that, you know, it seems to be the deal with Roar's and whether it was a more expansive plan that would include that whole area, but at this point, it's only the Roar's property.
Correct. We just deal more on a, you know, developer by developer, again, other developers in the area that have acquired properties and may redevelop. There was a pilot that went through city commission four weeks ago to demolish two houses on, I believe, Fourteenth Street and some incentives given there to remove two older homes and build, I believe, a twelve or sixteen plex. So, there's other activity in the neighborhood beyond Roar's.
Thank you.
One of the reasons right now it interests me to put this off a month, you know, for Rocky's proposal is simply that if we know Roar's owns several of these dangerous properties, I'd be interested in a month to see if they, they've got another month to do something about it.
Well, Bruce, has you taken any action on the garage?
I just want to make a comment as you're coming up here. I just want to make sure we're not getting outside of the scope of what we're actually voting on. I think we can go down a number of rabbit holes and talk about bigger things. We're, we're voting on a, just a piece of this, so keep that in mind as we go through this discussion.
Bruce Darelson with inspections. We have had discussions on the garage. That is the, probably the worst building that is out there that needs to be looked at. So, we'll look at each piece, each property that, we have received some complaints on some. Roar's, as long as we're having discussions with an owner and we have a timeline, we'd like to see that. We would rather not take action. As Nicole said, it takes a lot of time. It's usually four to eight months for us to get involved with the owner and find out if they can act on it or not and then us to take action. So, our process is very extensive. We have an owner that's willing to work with us. It seems like the request here is simple in nature. If nothing happens here today, we will probably take immediate action and just have discussions with the owner on some of the properties.
Thank you.
One more question.
Please, John.
If we pass this today, if we don't postpone it and we pass it, what's going to be the timeline to push Roar's to get this taken care of? We assume all these properties will go down this winter?
Going to say first, it'll go on to city commission, city commission will also have a hearing on this plan. I don't know if we could, if it's possible to get it on by next Monday, I doubt it, so it'll probably be on two weeks from Monday for their consideration. Larry, I don't know if you want to address a question for how many would go down, how soon?
We've just, we've set up a kind of a hit list of the worst, of the worst, so we're not going to go in in one day and just take them all down at once, but they're going to take a week to ten days to tear them down, fill up the holes. We'll just move from one crew to the next to the next. I don't know if we start this late, if we can get them all done before freeze up, but we'll get a good start on them and we'll just keep, keep working at them in the spring.
Question, okay.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are going to go back to what the motion is and the motion is to continue this item. We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Gunkelman?
Nay.
Holtz?
Nay.
Bachmeier?
Nay.
Tassa?
Nay.
McGilkey?
Nay.
Morgan?
Nay.
Schneider?
Aye.
Fisher?
Nay. That did not pass. Would we like another motion or any other discussion to help us get closer to a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the properties that were presented by Mr. Gilmore. Is that, or to approve the...
The renewal plans, approve the renewal?
Renewal plan.
If you just want to move the suggested motion that the renewal plans are consistent with our go 2030 plan.
We don't have that, but, yeah, okay, his motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Tassa?
Yes.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Schneider?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Holtz?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, well, with that, anything else for the good of the order? We're good? Okay, thank you all, we're adjourned.